Good evening. Is that on? Good evening. Welcome to our Jacksonville City Regular Council Meeting. Today is Tuesday, March the 8th, 2022. We do have a quorum present, so I will call this to order. I will ask Pastor John Atkinson from People's Church in our chaplain for our Jacksonville Police Department to come and give our invocation, and then we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance, if you'll stand. Thank you, John.
Thank you. Would you join me in prayer this evening? Our Heavenly Father, we're grateful tonight for another day of life. We thank you, Lord, for your faithfulness to us. Lord, we thank you for this city and this community and all the great families and people, Lord, that are represented. We pray tonight, Lord, that your will would be accomplished and that you would give wisdom to our council, Lord, as they make decisions, Lord, to continue to better this community. We continue to lift up, Lord, our police and fire and EMS and all of our emergency services personnel and their families. We ask your continued protection upon them as they serve and protect each one of us. We give you thanks and praise for it all, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledges. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, the Texas flag. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Our next item is a special presentation, and I will introduce Chief Williams of the Police Department, and he will run with our special presentation of best practices. And Henderson Police Chief Chad Taylor is here with him.
Agent, sir.
Honorable Mayor, council members, members of the Jacksonville community, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Chad Taylor, and I am Chief Police at Henderson, Texas. I'm also a representative for the Texas Police Chiefs Association, and I'm honored to be here tonight to represent their accreditation program. The Texas Police Chiefs Association is made up of over 1,500 professional police chiefs throughout the state who are dedicated to improving the delivery of quality of police services. I'm here this evening to present the Jacksonville Police Department with a certificate of reaccreditation for continuing to maintain their compliance with Texas law enforcement best practices for law enforcement for over the past four years. Several years ago, the Texas Police Chiefs Association developed accreditation program for Texas law enforcement. Many of you know about accreditation programs for schools, universities, and hospitals. They are all programs of professional excellence. They all require proof of compliance and a set of professional standards. Ours is similar. It's a voluntary program where agencies must prove that they meet or exceed over 170 difficult standards. Standards are based on Texas law, Texas court decisions, and contemporary best practices as identified by the Texas Police Chiefs Association. These standards address a full range of law enforcement operations such as use of force, protection of citizen rights, property and evidence management, patrol and investigative operations, just to name a few. This program has become the new gold standard for professional law enforcement in Texas, and these agencies across the state are working diligently to meet these requirements. Approximately five years ago, the Jacksonville Police Department first attained their accredited status with TPCA, and it was not easy to do. The agency had to conduct a complete audit of its policies, procedures, and operations in order to meet these standards. Since that time, the agency has submitted annual reports that were reviewed to ensure continued standards were met and continue to provide the citizens of Jacksonville with an effective police service. In January this year, trained assessors, police chiefs, and command officers from around the state of Texas spent two days conducting an assessment of the Jacksonville Police Department. These assessors interviewed staff, inspected facilities and operations, met with field officers, to ensure that all standards were met. The report was then sent to the accreditation committee, which is comprised of nine active police chiefs from around the state, who reviewed the report and voted to award accredited status. That vote was unanimous. During the process, Jacksonville Police Department has once again proven that it meets or exceeds the best practices for professional law enforcement in the state of Texas. Of over 2,700 law enforcement agencies in Texas, only 185 have achieved accredited status, and fewer than that has been reaccredited. This evening, we officially recognize the Jacksonville Police Department for their outstanding performance. What does this mean to your community? The accreditation program assures that both city management and the citizens of Jacksonville that their police department is operating in a manner which reflects the current best practices of law enforcement in the state of Texas. It means that your police department is continually striving for professional excellence, and it means that your police department is one of the very best in the state. The certificate we present this evening is symbolic. While it is a clear mark of professional excellence, the real value of the program is a process they must complete to receive their certificate. And once again, this is not the end of the process. The department will continue to submit annual reports to assure continued compliance, and in four years, we will be back for another onsite inspection to ensure the agency is continuing to comply with all standards. The Jackson Police Department is a leader in law enforcement in Texas, and you should be very proud of their accomplishments. Chief Williams?
Our program manager just go around, so he did the heavy lifting on this.
We'd like to, TPCA would like to present this with you. It's Texas Police Chiefs Association Foundation. See, this certificate, know that all Jacksonville Police Department, having fulfilled their necessary qualifications, man toward departments of Texas Police Chiefs Association, Texas Law Enforcement Best Practices Accreditation Program, have all attorney, volunteering proving their compliance with Texas law enforcement best practices. The Texas Police Chiefs Association Foundation Board Director does hereby award this certificate of accreditation. Yes, sir.
You're right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You bet. Appreciate it. Our next item is another presentation, Employer of the Month, presented by Shane Pace, President of Jedkamp.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to present this Employer of the Month. This month, we are presenting to STS Electronic Recycling. I believe I have Stephen Norton here today, just if you'd like to come up with me and present the award.
I think I will address James and everybody who wore this today.
There you go. I'd like to get this to you. So, for those of you who aren't familiar with STS Electronic Recycling, they are a very important member of the city of Jacksonville and community. I've got some talking points here, because they have done quite a few things, and I've had an opportunity to visit with Mr. Norton and tour some of his facilities here in Jacksonville and Cherokee County. But just so you know, they have five locations in the region. They have three locations here in the city of Jacksonville. They've made significant capital investments within the city. First is what was previously known as Discount City. They've taken that building and really made a huge transformation to what it was at one time. I've walked through that facility. It's a pretty cool facility. They've made some interior modifications to allow shipping and receiving. They've got folks in there doing all kinds of interesting projects. They also purchased the Waller Broadcasting Building. That's now their corporate headquarters, again, investing in our community. And then the Astro Air Facility, which was north of town, they purchased that and the land that's surrounding that. They're now occupying that building today. So again, they're continuing to invest here in Jacksonville. They have a total of about 250 employees, so they're a very large employer. And from what I've seen, as I've toured their facilities and met with Mr. Norton, they really have a broad range of jobs. They offer high skill, low skill jobs, everything from graphic and web design to programming, computers with new software, to shipping and receiving, sorting, all the electronics that are there. And they have a very broad range, everything from TVs to, you know, the mouse, maybe a microphone like this. They'll take anything that you have and they'll figure out a way to reuse it somewhere. So, we're doing a good service to the city, as well as to all of those who are utilizing that type of technology. So with that, I just want to thank you for being here in Jacksonville and look forward to working with you in the future and your continued success.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Now, look at her.
Thank you, Shane. Our next item is citizens' participation. This is where we set aside some time on our agenda to hear from citizens, to show their concern to the council. We do have one that has signed up, Mr. John Taylor. So if you will come, state your name and address, and we ask that you try to keep your comments to about three minutes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. My name is John Taylor, 2409 Lakeshore Drive, Jacksonville. I am the chairman of the board of the Vanishing Texana Museum, and I wanted to take this opportunity. I know that most people are aware that this is the 150th anniversary this year in 2022, the founding of Jacksonville. The museum is doing a number of activities in terms of special exhibits throughout the year. But one thing that we've done as a major contribution, I think, to add to the history of Jacksonville is that we have written a book regarding 50 of the articles at the museum. These were chosen as 50 artifacts that best reflect the history of Jacksonville and Cherokee County. We arranged them in chronological order. We took a photograph of each artifact. We've written a narrative on each artifact. And we have these available, both at the museum and at the library, and I will be out in the hall actually reading and for a $10 donation.
To what vendor plant sale.
To the collection of, that were really about this, that that we here that we're adding to 150 here to celebrate. Thank you very much for your time.
You bet. Thank you. Our second participant, and forgive me if I do this wrong, is Freddie Suarez. Is that close? Okay. Great. If you'll come to the podium, state your name and your address, and again, if you can keep your comments to about three minutes. We can't act on it. We can just hear what you want to talk about.
Yeah, my name is Freddie Suarez, and I live here in 520 College Avenue.
Okay.
My main reason is here, I'm here for is because my mom was trying to get her permanent self-plants here in Jacksonville. She usually locates herself at right there by Dairy Queen.
Okay.
And for some reason, they don't want to allow that anymore. And I know Jacksonville's main concern is about keeping Jacksonville beautiful, and I don't not see, you know, what's not beautiful about having plants, you know, for her to provide. Not only that, it also helps her, it helps her, you know, bring business to our Dairy Queen. I work for Foster Carter at that Dairy Queen, so when we have our, you know, traffic flow through there, they stop by, you know, buy some plants, and they walk right over to the Dairy Queen. My main concern is why can't, she's not allowed to sell plants anymore. I understand the whole food trailer things, you know, food trucks, but we're talking about just plants.
Okay.
And that's my concern. I just wish she's allowed to do that. She's a small business, and you know, she's growing, and I think this is a big part of Jacksonville, is helping her succeed.
Okay. Thank you so much. Was there anyone else that did not complete a piece of paper? Sure. Yep, come forward. Does she need to fill out something, or can she do it later, Greg, or what? Okay, go ahead. Come on.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Sherri Watson Brown, and I live at 421 Cherry Street. I have the concerns that since they've put all the cables in, right there at the end of Cherry Street in Kickapoo, it's just mud and a big hole there. Also, on the other end, the water line has been broken forever, and it's a big hole there as well. That whole facility and even the house on the corner is just very unattractive. I think the last time I was here, I did ask for a sign there or maybe a brick podium. I would care for it with the flowers that says Jacksonville Junior College, and I would maintain it myself if it was put there for a beautification for it. Also, I don't know if you guys are still doing the beautification program, but I'm very interested in being a part of that.
Okay. Very good.
So do we think we have anything where we can remove all the dirt and, you know, fill in all of those holes? Because I'm telling you, it's really bad. People run through them, and they're bouncing all over the place.
Okay. Very good. We made a note of that.
Yeah, ma'am, I'll ask Randall Chandler to visit with you, and he's back there in the corner. I'm sure we can do something.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Very good. Anyone else? Hearing none, seeing none, we'll go to the next item, is a continuation of a public hearing to hear and receive input regarding a special use permit request to allow for residents in a commercial building at 400 West Larissa Street. So I will, we will let that public hearing continue from last meeting.
Any cards?
Do we have any cards? Does anybody want to? So at this point, we can speak in favor of or against. Is that correct? So anyone that would like to speak in favor of or against that issue, you could come? Yeah, come. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mary Throughhill, and of course, I just want to know what's going on with our petition.
Right. Okay. So you're, you obviously are in favor of.
Oh, of course. I'm in favor of. I need a home.
Just for the record.
I need a home, yes.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
And like I said, I had said before, if I can't put my business there, I'll put my business elsewhere.
Right.
I mean, I just have to have a home.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
You bet. You bet. Anyone else want to speak in favor of or against? Hearing none, we'll close that portion of the public hearing, and we will consider an ordinance granting a request of that special use permit.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the special use permit ordinance.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Tim McRae, a second by Mayor Pro Tem Rob Gowan. Now we can have some discussion. Do we all remember what all this was about?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Does anybody have any concerns or discussion at all?
No.
All right. Then I will.
I wouldn't bet Miss Suarez over there.
All right. Then if we have no discussion, we've entertained the motion. We have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number nine is a presentation by Patillo, Brown, and Hill.
Eight.
Eight, pardon me. Public hearing is, we have another public hearing to hear and request input regarding a zone change request from P Plan Development to C Multi-Family Lots 10, 11, and 12, Block 3276, 1,000 Block of College Avenue. You want to?
Yes, Mayor, City Council, this request is to rezone three lots. You'll see there on the slide, it appears to be one, but the legal description is there of three lots totaling approximately .6 acres, located generally at the southeast corner of the Woodlawn Avenue and College Avenue intersection, generally on the west side of town. The applicant is seeking to rezone from P Plan Development to C Multi-Family Low Density. Taking a look at the zoning map here, you'll see that the PMZ Commission approved this 4-0 vote. Mr. Calco, or Director Calco, was absent at the time of the vote on February 15th. Again, you'll see the surrounding zoning primarily. You're noting that properties to the east are mostly single-family. The land is zone B 1 and 2 family, but primarily a lot of single-family dwellings, mostly masonry in that general area. At the northwest side or quadrant of that intersection, you'll note some D zoning, which is multi-family medium density. These properties were likely at one point part of Lawn Morris and were previously, would have been zone P Plan Development. That's what most of this plan development in this area is, is a carryover from Lawn Morris. So those structures already existed, and were then thereafter zoned D to allow for a commercial use other than that that was allowed by the prior plan development of Lawn Morris. You'll recall at our February City Council meeting, we did rezone a structure from Plan Development to C Multi-Family just a little bit north of here. Again, that was a structure formerly built as part of the Lawn Morris campus and then zoned appropriately for low-density multi-family. So, again, the request before you this evening is to go from P Plan Development to C Multi-Family Low Density. But again, I would note that this lies kind of really in an area that may be more appropriate to be 1 and 2 family. The plan development, again, being a carryover from Lawn Morris, and again, the multi-family in the area, most of those structures are legacy dormitories or commercial structures that were formerly part of Lawn Morris. Who is requesting this? I'm going to have to look in your packet. Ah, gotcha.
So I'll, I'll open this up to a public hearing. So is there anyone that would like to come and speak in favor of or against? This is your time. Okay. Seeing none and hearing none, I will close that portion of the public hearing, and we'll consider a motion.
You need a motion before discussion, correct?
Yeah.
Well, I'll make a motion for approval of a Plan B zones to the of a C.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Tim McRae to.
I'll second, but I haven't.
Okay. So we've got a motion and a second to change their request to Plan B. So now we can have a discussion.
Randall.
Yes.
There's so much problem with water, particularly the access area sewage and stuff like that. How do we structurally and how do we handle multi-family housing right there in that low spot? Was that the Big Dig a couple of years ago? But from the access standpoint, those people aren't having any more issues with stuff like that during our heavy rains? Okay. That was my only concern, knowing that neighborhood and what was underground. Okay.
So in a layman's terms, the difference in the C that they have requested and the B that y'all suggested is C, you could build a triplex or a quadplex, and B, the largest thing you could do is a duplex?
Yeah, thank you for asking, Mayor, and I apologize for not getting into that. C Multi-Family Low Density would allow a maximum of 10 living units per acre, this being about six tenths of an acre. You'd be looking at six potential units. Based on the size of the lot and the required setbacks, more than likely, you'd see a two-story development here, should the property be rezoned C Multi-Family and the applicant choose to get six units on there. B, the 1 and 2 family, you'd be looking at duplexes. And the lot, lot size would be 6,000 square feet. This lot's roughly 25,000 square feet, so they could certainly get a couple, if potentially up to three, 1 and 2 family, but you'd have three distinct structures, each potentially being a duplex. So they may be able to get close to the same amount of housing units on the property. It's really just a design characteristic of going up and looking more apartment style or going duplex and keeping it on the ground.
If we approve the B, can they still go up?
B does allow multi-story development, but again, it's just going to be a duplex. So really costs, you're going to spread it out. You're going to keep it on the ground.
So B might try to, it might appear to keep the integrity of the neighborhood more like it is currently than the C, potentially.
That was my thought.
And just, just to bring a little bit of clarity, this property, this zoning application was noticed as going from P Plan Development to C Multi-Family. But since B 1 and 2 family is a less intense use, we're able to take action on that, that direction tonight. Had they asked for B, we tonight, based on how we noticed the project, could not go more intense.
I see. But it's okay to drop it down one notch to a B?
That's correct.
As the motion stands?
Yes.
Does anybody have any more discussion, questions?
Nope.
None? Okay. So we have a motion to change it from a C to a B. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Very good. Now, number, item number nine, presentation by Patillo, Brown, and Hill regarding the 2021 Audit. I was just so excited to hear the good news. I've heard a little snippet of the good news.
Hey, good to see you.
How are y'all doing tonight?
Fine, thank you.
Good. Good to see everybody. Thanks for having me.
You bet.
You should have in front of you a copy of the audit report, so I'm going to point out a couple of things, not going to go into a ton of detail, but if you want to follow along. Sorry. What'd you say?
A couple.
Couple. Yeah. My name's Kent Willis. I'm the Audit Manager at Patillo, Brown, and Hill in our Government Audit Department. Thanks for having me. My intention tonight is to give you guys a brief overview of how the audit went, of course, answer any questions that you might have, and then let you get back to the rest of your business that you have to attend to tonight. So I do always want to start out by saying thanks for picking us as your auditor. Mayor Gorham, as you know, there's lots of accountants out there who'd be happy to do your audit, and the relationship for us has been really great. So we appreciate the relationship and hope that you guys find it fruitful as well. So I also want to say thanks to Roxanna and her crew. They really do bear the brunt of the audit every year. All the annoying questions and requests over a four-week span go directly to her, and she and her crew have to figure that out and answer while doing their regular day-to-day job. So Roxanna does a great job. I think you guys can trust that not only is this document accurate, but the stuff you're getting from your finance crew throughout the year is in good shape. So, but it's not just finance who contributes to a clean audit. It's everybody at the city who does the right thing, follows the city policies, and spends the taxpayer dollars appropriately. That's what makes an audit go well. So it really is everyone at the city that contributes to a clean opinion at the end of the year. So anyway, we're going to get started. If you want to follow along, I did want to point out one thing in the spiral-bound document that you have in front of you on page roman numeral six, or VI. So what we're looking at here is the award that you got for your 2020 Annual Financial Report. So if you're not familiar with this, I'm sure most of you guys are, but some people in the audience may not know, this page here is the award that the city got for last year's financial statements. And the way that process works, at the end of tonight, or in a couple of weeks, Roxanna will submit this document to the Government Finance Officers Association, who will then grade it against a really rigorous set of standards, both for form and content. So we're, these financials are supposed to follow certain principles. GFOA is there to make sure that they do. You guys, this, the 2020 Audit was your fourth year in a row to get it, and we fully expect this document will be your fifth year in a row. So I just wanted to point that out, because you definitely are in the minority of our clients. Not all of our clients do this, because it's hard. It does take a lot of work. So congrats on the fourth award in a row, and we definitely think you'll be getting the fifth sometime this next year. All right. So moving on, let's get into the audit. I think a good place to start would be page one, talk about how the audit went, and we'll go on from there. So as I mentioned, we did do the financial statement audit for the year ended September 30, 2021. Page one and two kind of talks about, in legalese, but talks about how the audit went. So I do like to start off by mentioning, when we do an audit with the government, both parties have to make some agreements, both you guys and then us as the auditor. The city has agreed to accept these financial statements and accept responsibility for them. I always mention that because we actually do assist in drafting the financials that are in front of you tonight. That's very common for local governments in Texas and nationwide. But as a check, as a check safe on that, you guys have designated an individual who can review the document that we drafted, and they would notice if we made an error in it. And so your financial, the finance director is able to do that, and so the city accepts responsibility for the financials, even though we drafted them. Now, our responsibility as the auditor, of course, is to do an audit, if that makes sense, and then present the results of the audit to you at the conclusion of the process. And so to condense about five or six weeks of work down into a few sentences, our goal as the auditor is essentially every number you see in these financials, from the balance sheets and income statements, all the way to the back, almost. Our job is as a third party, independent of the city, how do I know these numbers are right? So it's not enough for your finance director to tell me, hey, we have $5 million of cash. How do I know that as an independent auditor? And so we're digging through general ledgers, invoices, cash receipts. We even send confirmations to third parties. At the end of the process, our goal is, is this information accurate? And so you will find, fortunately, at the top of page two, we were able to issue what's called an unmodified opinion at the conclusion of the audit work. And so those of you probably know, that's a fancy term for a clean opinion, and that's the highest level of assurance that we can give on an audit of a local government. So really happy to be able to present clean opinions to you guys for the 2021 Audit. I'm sure you expected to hear that, but it's probably nice to hear it from a third party. I'm sure you expected to hear that, but it's probably nice to hear it from a third party. One other thing I'd like to point out, just as we move through the document, if you want to take a look at page 16, I thought I would look at the general fund, fund balance. This is a few months ago, of course, but go back and pass a few months and take a look. Page 16, the first left-hand column, what we're looking at is a general fund income statement for fiscal year '21. And just kind of honing in at the bottom of the page there, we have net change in fund balance. Your fund balance increased about $950,000, just slight increase there, healthy increase. And to kind of put that into perspective, your ending fund balance ended at $3.8 million for FY '21. And so we, we kind of look at that number and see, how many months of fund balance do you have, essentially? That's kind of a ratio you look at to see the health of a general fund. And last year, you were at 2.8 months, and now you're about 3.7 months. I think the, the minimum, like, kind of average recommendation is about three months. So you, you guys are meeting what you need to have, and you've actually added to it a bit to go above that minimum or that, that average recommendation. So I'll say, most of our clients, from cities to counties to school districts, probably sit in that three- to four-month range. We do have some with six months or a year. I know there's, that's, there's a lot of discussion that goes into how much should you have, of course, but I just wanted to point that out as of 9/30/21. Then the last piece of information I wanted to give you guys, if you wanted to follow along, it's on page 96 and 97. That first letter I went through a second ago is the opinion letter. That's the one you always think of when you think of a financial statement audit. But because you're a government entity, of course, we have to do a couple of extra procedures and report to you about those procedures. So 96 and 97 kind of talk about that. And so essentially, what we have to do when we're auditing the government is look at your controls over the financial reporting process, so your policies and procedures that are in place. It's not, it's not enough for a government just to have the right numbers at the end of the year in your financial statements. You also need to have good procedures to ensure that throughout the year. So we have to look at those controls. On page 97, you'll see a paragraph titled Compliance and Other Matters. Little extra thing for governments being audited, if, if we were to notice an area where you guys didn't follow a law or a regulation or a grant agreement that could affect your financials, I'd have to tell you about that tonight. So compliance, controls, extra, extra kind of shoelaces on an, on an audit of a government. Fortunately, as you'll see, the letter's kind of short, there are no findings or exceptions to report to you guys tonight. I'll, I'll say that first opinion letter I talked about, most of our clients get a clean opinion, that's very common. But this is the area where we have findings typically. There's lots of rules to follow when you have turnover in staff, internal controls can break down, but really happy to report that you guys have clean opinion and no findings under these extra standards that we reported under. So about as good as it gets for an audit, really. Any questions I could answer? If you want to drill down, we can get into the debits and credits. I'm happy to do that. Any questions I can answer about the audit process this year?
Very good, thank you.
Thank you so much, we appreciate it.
You bet.
Have a good night.
Thank you. So we've heard the presentation of the audit. Our item is for consideration and possible action regarding the findings of the audit. So I guess I would entertain a motion to, to accept the audit and approve the audit. Yeah.
I'll make the motion to approve the findings of the 2020, 2021 audit.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Robb-Gowan.
Second.
Second by Councilman Tim McGray. Any questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number 10 is our consent agenda. They require little or no deliberations by the council. You can see, it's just approving the minutes, one property tax refund, a new bank account, and appointment of election workers. So I will entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Mindy Gallock. Second by Councilman Hubert Robinson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number 11 is a presentation by Hilltop Securities regarding the sale of tax notes and a consideration of an ordinance number 1615, Mr. James.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, I'm going to play Hilltop for you tonight regarding the presentation. But as we've discussed and looked at in a few different meetings and workshop agendas, this item is for the sale of some tax notes. We're looking to sell about $1 million of tax notes. The deposit to our project fund would be just shy of $960,000 with the cost of issuance being roughly $40,000. That's the cost of the bond council, the financial advisor, and then some various other institutions. This is money to be set aside for the purposes of investing in what will eventually become our civic center. We've closed on the purchase of the civic center there at Cherokee Ranch Golf Club between the last meeting and, and sitting before you tonight. You see our fund balance in the Hotel Occupancy Fund, which was used to fund the purchase, sits, sat at about $724,000 at the end of last calendar year. With the addition of these tax note proceeds, that would, would bring us to about 1.7 million, and we have made a $500,000 payment on the clubhouse with an additional $250,000 to be funded over the next seven years back to the Jacksonville Economic Development Corporation. So you see our fund balance there staying at about $1.2 million. Again, this debt will be serviced with Hotel Occupancy Fund revenue. It's one of the most restrictive funding sources we have here in Jacksonville. It is only revenue brought into the city by hotel stays, so mostly by the tourism, construction industry, and others coming to visit Jacksonville. So we're blessed to have some really nice hotels here in town, and thankfully, those hotels generate hotel occupancy tax. That source of revenue has been trending positively and will be used to repay and service this debt, hoping to put in, you know, anywhere between $300,000 and $400,000, I think, into kind of renovating that facility and standing it up to be real kind of crown jewel of the tourism industry here in town.
Okay, thank you. So I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we move forward with the issuance and sale of a city tax note, series 2022, awarding the sale of said notes and levying a tax and payment thereof, prescribing the form of the said note, enacting other provisions related to the subject.
Very good. We have a motion by.
Do I need to say the ordinance number 1615?
1615, there you go. We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Robb-Gowan.
Second.
Second by Councilman Tim McGray. Any questions? Discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion does carry. Item number 12, should we move that since we didn't get complete with?
That, that's affirmative, yes, sir.
Okay, so we'll move item 12 down to the bottom. Item 13 is consideration of an ordinance modifying Chapter 12, Article 4 of the Code of Ordinances relating itinerant vendors. Mr. James.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, items 13 and 14 on your agenda kind of co-mingle a little bit. We'll be discussing a little bit at greater length, I think, the food truck and trailer ordinance this evening. Formally, the itinerant vendor ordinance covered both food trucks, food trailers, as well as vendors potentially in town that sell plants or blankets or other types of soft and hard goods. Looking to break those apart tonight. So item 13 is for a new itinerant vendor ordinance. You see the definition there on the slide as defined in the ordinance. And kind of the primary merits of this were, are that all sales must be on private property and not located in any public rights-of-way, nor within 300 feet of any state-maintained highway as written. All sales locations must have written permission of the landowner, and then all itinerant vendors must have the necessary sales tax permits and be remitting sales tax to the city of Jacksonville for sales made inside the city limits. The big, the big note there is that the, that they're not to operate within 300 feet of a state-maintained highway. I'll tell you, at this time, I believe we have two itinerant vendors permitted through March 10th of this year as itinerant vendors. The remainder of those vendors that were previously permitted under the itinerant vendor ordinance will now fall underneath the food truck or trailer ordinance.
So I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance modifying Chapter 12, Article 4 of the Code of Ordinances regulating itinerant vendors.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Tim McGray.
Second.
Second by Councilman Hubert Robinson. Now, any discussion? That we might want to have? Is there a big change in, in what we had, I mean, the big changes to 300 feet?
The change is the location, yes, sir. That's the primary change. This is also the ordinance that door-to-door sales individuals would be permitted underneath. It's a $100 permit per, per year. I will say that there are some exemptions, one of them being vendors of farm produce if raised on land owned or leased by the vendor and sold by a member of their household. So there are some exemptions.
Okay.
Does she grow them herself?
She grows plants, yes.
I believe she'd fall underneath that exemption, then.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number 15 is to discuss with possible action and ordinance amending Appendix A zoning, Article 1, General Provision.
Mr. Mayor. 14.
Whoa, what am I doing? Shaking them off too early. Item number 14 is the consideration of an ordinance modifying the Code of Ordinances and regulating food truck trailers and food truck courts. Mr. James.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, I'm going to go into a little bit more depth on this one. I want to start with the exceptions to the ordinance as well as the compliance and grace period due to some of the changes, but you'll note that there's five exceptions listed on the slide there. I'm not going to read them, but probably, I don't know which one would be the most important. It kind of depends who you are, but trucks that operate for less than 75 minutes, which would be kind of like a roving or roaming type food truck, maybe serving construction sites or different businesses in town, they're exempt. And then, again, nonprofit charitable operations, we have one food truck in town that does a lot of donations and a lot of good charity work and charitable work here in town, so they would be exempt. Catering events are not, are they, I'm sorry, they are exempt. Again, you'll see that vendor of farm produce, they are exempt. And then the compliance and grace period, and I do want to touch on that, that all food truck operators with active permits valid until the 10th of this month, they'll have 120-day grace period from the date of this ordinance's adoption, should it be adopted tonight, but that any new food truck operators without a valid permit would immediately fall under the regulations of this ordinance. That gives anybody that there's any necessary changes, adequate time, ample time to get through a new permitting process or potentially an SUP, special use permit process. There's really three definitions germane to this new food truck ordinance. That is the food truck itself. You'll note that it's, it's able to sell food and associated beverages and only, you know, they're only defined per this ordinance if they exceed 75 minutes of operation per day. Mobile food truck parks, which are areas in town that go through a special use permit rezoning process, we have two of those currently in town. We have Main Street Plaza, and then we have one up further north on 69 Crawfish Landing?
Coffee Land.
Coffee Landing, thank you.
That sells coffee.
Sales coffee, yeah, I get confused. So there's two of those in town. They're allowed to have one or more food trucks at them, and they do get some additional perks, if you will, as it pertains to some of the regulations in the ordinance. And then there are operation sites. These are sites that are to be permitted throughout town or may be permitted throughout town in which trucks can operate for up to five days per calendar month. So this is if you, I'll just use an apartment complex as an example. If they wanted a taco truck to come out every Tuesday night and serve tacos, that's just kind of a neighborhood thing for their apartment complex, but that people passing by the complex may also be able to patronize, they could come in, get an operation site permit from the city. It's good for a year for $75, and then that taco truck or the different food trucks or vendors could come for up to five days per calendar month, and there can be up to three on the site at one time. So here's kind of the permit structure. It breaks down like this. The food truck itself is required by Cherokee, Cherokee County Public Health to have a permit. Comes at an annual cost of $200 for the first year and $150 per year thereafter. And then the, the truck is also required to have a permit from the city of Jacksonville for $100 per year. And then there's kind of different permits or processes related to where they choose to locate, again, if it's over 75 minutes. And that is, they either go through the special use permit process and become a mobile food park, or they locate at an operation site. And again, the operation site, those permits are issued to that property owner. We do have some businesses in town that, that like to have different food trucks and trailers come out, kind of sit at their door, allow their, allow their employees and their workforce to eat, eat at the truck over their lunch break, and so that's, that's where these operation sites kind of come in. Some of the items to be regulated, and I'm not going to get into the full scope and breadth of these right now, but acceptable locations, hours of operation, parking, noise, disposal of trash, and cooking byproducts, signage, restrooms, and utilities. Those are all regulated per this ordinance. And there's different regulations, whether it's a special use permit mobile food park or an operation site. Happy to answer any questions you may have. One thing I do want to note, too, is that the two SUP food truck parks, those SUPs are good, they don't have to go through any kind of additional SUP process. They're essentially grandfathered to have an SUP, and unless those sites are sold or change ownership voluntarily, they don't have to come back for via this ordinance.
So I'll entertain a motion on that.
I make a motion, we approve the ordinance modifying the Code of Ordinances and regulating food trucks slash trailers and food truck courts.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilwoman Mindy Gallock.
Second.
Second by Councilman Hubert Robinson. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number 15, is that correct? Is considered with possible action and ordinance amending Appendix A zoning, Article 1, General Provision, Section 4, Definitions of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Jacksonville, Texas to remove the definitions of mobile food park and mobile food vendor.
Yeah, Mayor, Council, this is simply just a cleanup item. Thanks to Brett for bringing this to our attention, but essentially with the adoption of the itinerant vendor ordinance and the amended ordinance for food trucks and trailers this evening, he's just doing some cleanup work regarding some definitions located at other places within the Code of Ordinances, because we've self-contained the definitions related to those individual ordinances within those ordinances themselves.
Okay. All right. So I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we amend Appendix A zoning art, General Provision, Section 4, Definitions of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Jacksonville, Texas.
All right.
To remove the definitions of a mobile food park and mobile food vendor.
Very good. We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Robb-Gowan.
Second.
Second by Councilman Tim McGray. Any questions? Just legal cleanup.
Need it up.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number 16, consideration with possible action, the removal of the old concession stand, concession stand, and police annex building at the concession area in preparation for the boating access grant.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, as I think discussed briefly at our agenda workshop, there are two structures that as a result of the boating access grant, which we expect to commence construction after this year's boating season, so I would say early fall 2022, that would need to be removed as part of that project. We're prepared now as staff to remove these, and that's how the project was going to be bid anyway, so we're just really kind of getting ahead of it. On the right-hand side of your screen, you'll see a CMU brick building that formerly used, I think, as some kind of police potential outpost. I don't believe it's been used in years. And then on the left-hand side of your screen, again, circled in red, is the concession stand area. It's really not in a state of, it's really in kind of a state of disrepair, especially from an interior standpoint, and not something we're looking to lease out this summer. So if we can get ahead on removal of these two structures, we'll just, we'll be ready for the boating access grant and look forward to sharing more information on where we stand on that project soon.
So I will entertain a motion, and I will make that motion, to remove the old concession stand and police annex building at the concession area. stand and police annex building at the concession area in preparation for the boating access grant. So we have a motion by the mayor.
Second.
Second by Councilman Tim McGray. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number 17 is consideration with possible action, an amendment to the JEDCO budget. Mr. Shane Pace?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Could use my laptop, wasn't sure how well I'd be able to see the screen here. This item this evening, this up for consideration, is an amendment to the annual fiscal year 2022 budget for the Jacksonville Economic Development Corporation. The request is for an amount not to exceed $418,321.55. That is in support of the downtown sidewalk project that you are all familiar with. This amendment will reappropriate the necessary funds, thank you, sir. This amendment will reappropriate the necessary funds from the unreserved cash balance to the downtown sidewalk project line item that's located in this year's fiscal year budget. The current available funds in that cash balance as of January 31st, 2022, was $5,550,110.98. Should this amendment be approved this evening, the remaining balance following that as of January 31st would be $5,131,788.98. This was considered by the JEDCO Board of Directors on February 17th, and they did unanimously approve the budget amendment, and I request the approval this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Shane. Very good. All entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion that we amend the JEDCO budget as presented by the JEDCO Director.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Tim McGray.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mindy Gallock. Any discussion? Except for my pronunciation of Mindy Gallock.
Gallock.
Gallock. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number 19, consideration with possible action, approving...
18.
18. Consideration with possible action, Kathleen's got me stirred up. Consideration with possible action, approving the purchase of laptops and printers for police vehicles in the amount of $130,094 using the American Relief Act funds.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, the Police Department has requested to purchase ToughBooks, Panasonic ToughBooks. We're currently operating in our police cruiser units and patrol vehicles of iPads. We've had some known issues with iPads over the last recent history, I'll just say that. And they have a tendency to overheat, and they really just weren't designed for the rigorous and tough job that police, men and women do every day, and these, these type of machines are certainly designed for that specifically. And so this purchase of $130,000 would cover the purchase of 20 ToughBook laptops, 25 vehicle mounts, the in-vehicle printers necessary for citations and warnings, and then some paper there. So we need the paper. And so we're looking for your approval to expend those funds this evening, to swap from, again, iPads to these, these machines. There's certainly some operational improvements to come with this. The iPads really don't have keyboards attached, so officers pretty much do, complete their evening or their daytime shift by going into the public safety complex and then filling out the necessary reports, which that's a big part of the job that many people underestimate. This will allow them to maintain greater presence in the community, whether it be in a parking lot or on the side of a neighborhood road, while they're constant, you know, monitoring, kind of eyes out, if you will, to do reports on the fly, and then maybe just finalize their evening by printing some of those reports and punching out for the day. So certainly, in my opinion, something we need.
Right. Very good. Okay, hearing that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve the purchase of laptops and printers for the police vehicles in the amount of $130,094 using American Relief Act funds.
So we have a motion to approve by Councilman Robgouin. Second by Councilman Hubert Robinson. Any discussion?
When do we take delivery of these?
Six to eight weeks, is what I've been told.
Okay.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number 19 is consideration with possible action, approving the purchase of two additional police Tahos.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, another police item here, the purchase of two 2022 Chevrolet Tahoe police pursuit vehicles not to exceed $115,000. We'd be using coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, SLFRF, for this purchase. City anticipates about $3.6 million from this funding source. We've received 1.8 to date, and later this summer, we'll receive the second tranche, second and final tranche of those funds. You'll see there on the right-hand side of the screen that per the U.S. Department of Treasury and the President of the United States, a specific use of these funds are for police equipment and police operational improvements. We did approve in full transparency the purchase of three 2022 Tahos at the February meeting. This is again for the purchase of two additional, bringing this budget year's up to five Tahos.
Very good. I'll entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion that we purchase the two Chevrolet Tahos. How about that?
I like it.
I'll second it.
With the designated funds as presented by the city manager.
So we have a motion by Councilman Tim McGray, a second by Councilman Robgouin. Duly noted, they are Chevrolet.
They're four Tahos.
You can get them, which is the main thing.
Yeah, exactly. So we have a motion, a second. We have any discussion? Based on the vehicle, like Tim McGray said, the hardness and the difficulty of finding them, I think Police Chief had kind of looked around, actually found two additional ones, and without hesitation...
He stayed on Amazon.
Yeah, without any hesitation, it was recommended that since we located them, we go ahead and buy them.
Absolutely.
So all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number 20, consideration with possible action, awarding a bid for the RFP for the Water Treatment Chemicals Annual Supply Contract.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, the city put out a request for proposal, advertised it per state law, and received one bid from Brent Tag for the purchase of chemicals necessary for surface water treatment for our drinking water here in town. We do have experience with Brent Tag, and it's positive. You'll see that it was kind of a quantity style bid base, so it's not a locked-in price. It's just as we need chemicals, we have pricing to purchase those as needed throughout the year.
Very good. I'll entertain a motion?
I'll make the motion that we award a bid for the RFP for the Water Treatment Chemicals Annual Supply Contract.
Have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Robgouin.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mindy Gallock.
Yes!
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number 21 is consideration with possible action on an interlocal agreement with the city of Bullard, Texas, to allow the city of Jacksonville, Texas, to act as their purchasing agent.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, pretty straightforward interlocal agreement with the city of Bullard. Again, just to allow for them to purchase different items, should the vendor be willing to offer the price to them after we secure pricing via competitive bidding processes. One such item, they may choose to use this on is trucks, and, but it could be the Brent Tag chemicals. If Brent Tag wanted to offer them, since we did the state-required RFP process, if Brent Tag wanted to offer that same pricing to the city of Bullard, that would allow this to happen. I don't believe it's in your packet. I think we're waiting on comments from the Bullard City Attorney, correct Brett?
Yes, sir.
But pending, I would ask that your motion to approve tonight be pending any necessary review by Brett.
Good.
No cost to the city of Jacksonville.
Right. So I'll entertain a motion?
I'll make the motion that we agree to an interlocal agreement with the city of Bullard, Texas, to allow the city of Jacksonville to act as their purchasing agent.
Have a motion by Councilman Robgouin.
Second.
Second by Councilman Hubert Robinson.
Mr. Mayor, before you go to vote, I would like the record to note I'm going to abstain from this vote, because I'm an awarded vendor, and I, and if they do purchase trucks, I will benefit. My company will.
Okay.
So I would like to abstain.
Okay, you may do so. So we have a motion, a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries.
Well, the first thing that asked for was two Tahos. Is that a problem?
Ours are not for sale. Ours are not for sale. Item number 22 is to consideration with possible action, a request by the Fred Douglas Illuminati Association to close Commerce Street from South Bonner to Austin Street, Austin Street from East Russ to Wilson Street, and Wilson Street from Austin to South Bonner for their 100-year celebration parade on July 30th, 2022, beginning at 8:00 a.m.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, this is where exhibits come in handy. This is essentially the exact same route as the Jacksonville Christmas Parade, put on the chamber, by the Chamber of Commerce. Looking to start this at 8:00 a.m. and, you know, wrap up probably within 60 to 90 minutes after. It'll be a relatively moving event similar to the parade.
Good. I'll entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the designated road closures at the designated times for this parade.
Very good. We've got a motion by Councilman Tim McGray. Second by Councilman Hubert Robinson. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion does carry. We're down to item 23.
You got this logo.
Open forum for mayor and council.
Just your idea?
We have them, this is open forum for mayor and council.
Your counsel?
Gosh. I'll stop. Do you want me to start?
Sure. You start. What do we?
I just want to, I just want to make a comment. I signed up for the Citizens Police Academy. Obviously, this is tax season, and I really have no business goofing off on Monday nights.
It's fun.
But Robgouin has signed up for it. We have completed seven out of the eight. It's been a fantastic experience. You learn a lot. You learn that I'm glad I didn't get the call to be a policeman, and I respect all that they do. But your police chief is, he loves what he does, and he's very passionate when he teaches, and he's a very good teacher, and I have really enjoyed that class.
Absolutely.
So I just wanted to plug your, your class.
Absolutely.
Do we get another one in September? Sign up. So the cost is zero. That's all I have. Go ahead. Mayor Pro Tim?
What a wild harebrained idea that we light up the tower in blue and yellow in solidarity for the situation in Ukraine right now. There were too many technical difficulties to do that, but I'm thinking that Daniel came up with a nice compromise here with our new city logo moving forward for the next brief period of time. To be determined.
I think it's great.
I do, too.
Yeah, I do, too.
Good idea, both of you.
Great idea. Thank you, Daniel, for your creativeness. I wish I had some, but I don't.
That's why we have Daniel.
Exactly. All right. Anybody else on the council? All right, city manager report?
Sheriff, Mayor, City Council, on February 24th, I just want to thank all of you all for going through our strategic visiting session. That was an all-day event, and I know, I know you're busy, and we just appreciate all the hours you put into helping the operation and giving us the guidance we need to be successful. So we look forward to kind of boiling that one-day session into kind of a strategy map, if you will, and tying some of our future efforts and certainly our budget process back to that. And so we'll have some further action on that soon. And then thankfully, on March 4th, we did celebrate the grand opening at the Public Safety Complex. I want to say it was a good event. Our police and fire team can throw stuff together fast, I'll say that as well, and it came out really nice. I think we had about 60 to 80 people in attendance, and really kind of had a open-house style opportunity for citizens to be able to walk through the facility, really feel and touch it and see it as it was their own and it is. And we just so thank the city council for your vision and the city, our citizens for bringing that to fruition. It's going to serve us for many years to come. I do want to mention that as you stood up sometime last year, your sesquicentennial committee, they've rolled up their sleeves, they're really putting a lot of effort into everything going on. I've seen them downtown on the weekends, they're meeting here in the evenings quite regularly. They have kind of subcommittees within themselves. It's certainly not just your typical party planning committee. This is, they're the doers, and they're bringing together a few very special events. I want to bring two of them to your attention tonight. One will be the Time Capsule opening on May 11th. We'll have some details to follow, but that will be at Hazel Tilton Park, very close to the former Central Fire Station, likely in the morning. That'll be exactly 50 years from when it was buried. And then on Saturday, October 22nd, we'll have the big downtown birthday bash, complete with live music, food games, kids' activities, and quite a bit more to come. So looking forward to those two things coming out of the committee. I think that is all I have.
Okay. Very good. So at this time, at 7:07, we will go into executive closed session, per city hall conference room, for Open Meetings Act 551.071, consult with city attorney, 551.072, Real Property, and 551.074, Personal Matters, and we will come back out if there's any action necessary at 7:07. Thank you for coming. So we will reconvene into regular session at 7:55, and I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion to change our city attorney agreement status from outside council to in-house.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any discussion that we need to have on that?